Need to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was on the May the seventh, I believe. Well, no, the day's May the seventh. What day was the meeting on?
March the fifth.
April the sixteenth.
April sixteenth, okay.
I got March the fifth.
Yeah, we cast the one on sixteenth.
March the fifth.
March the fifth, I got it now. I got the paintings stuck together. Joe had them look for me. Okay, March the fifth, that's the minute we're looking at. That's the last meeting.
I make the motion to approve the minutes from March fifth.
The motion need a second.
My second.
Motion a second, those in favor of Colorado Joe, I guess.
Ron Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Don Sillings.
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Comments from citizens? We have any about here? No? Jerry, you don't have any, do you? Okay, my update is gonna be covered, I think, with the city manager. I don't have a whole lot, except we've been repairing leaks as we can, and with the few peoples we have, but we have fixed some leaks, and he was probably one of that, but uh, he's got some stuff he's gonna cover when it's his turn, which is now.
Thank you, Mayor. The water loss pilot program is now at fifty percent complete. Below is a list of the items that have been completed and are currently in progress. The water system GPS and GIS inventory, which is a field survey crew who is mapping and locating the existing water valves, fire hydrants, and water meters are now at ninety-eight percent complete. With this phase of the mapping portion of the project. With the overall status, the GPS and GIS is at on hundred percent completion. However, they sort of entered into the computer, which makes it the ninety-eight percent. When it comes to number two, the leak detection, Rye Engineering has done acoustic leak detection survey, and it has been completed as well. Fifty-five leaks throughout the system. With an estimated four hundred thousand gallons per day of water loss occurring in those fifty-five leaks, which is equal to about five gallons a minute per leak. Other phases of the project to be completed, once the mapping is at a hundred percent, they include the hydraulic model or the water system model, the zone metering and the SCADA systems. Also a validity study to ensure that the meters are being read correctly and billing is entered correctly. Also, the project to install the new meters at the raw water pump station and decant basin at the water drip plant is almost complete. The meters and the valve box have been installed, and the plant's grounds are being graded this week. That's all I have, Mayor.
So I'm sure they stand on the lift station number two, as far as completion pitch.
Is that the midway?
Yeah.
You want the one on Midway or the one on Johnson Road?
The one on Midway.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be done, uh, start up the, no later than eighteen this month.
Eighteen? So they're, they're on final.
So they should be wrapped up in the next two to three weeks.
And they got the one on Johnson Road done, don't they?
The one on Johnson Road is done.
Then we'll go to number one.
And that's the one on Airport Road, ain't it?
Number one, no, it's the one down.
So Joe.
And for number one lift station, we still have design work to do as well, and state approval before it's ready to go.
Now, which one was it that gave so much problem? Was that the one, or was it the one on Midway?
The one on Midway is giving us a lot of trouble here in the last year or so. Number two started like about the last six months, that's the reason why we had to start number two first. They was gonna start number three if they were able to enjoy the number two. But all the pumps went out of number two, so we had to switch over here first to get it.
What's the one over there on Airport?
That's number four, that's just a little bit. It's only got two little, two big pumps in here.
We're not gonna do anything with that one on this contract.
Yeah, they ain't gonna be nothing to do this way.
We're just doing three, it's on the main lines?
The three big, three big lift stations, those are the ones that we already done again.
When, uh, when they get done there, I talked to you about this Thomas, if you remember or not. Those hollows and lights they've got mounted on the pole, they're beside of it, that don't work. Can they replace those with LEDs?
I'm sure.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
They're going to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, they even put a big LED, uh, another panel extension thing.
Did they?
Yeah. I thought they had put some kind of wire, but we had to have water here and had to go out.
Yeah. Those, those, uh, hollows in there at, uh, one on Midway, they've been out for years. Of course, they's covered up with cabs there for the longest, so you never know if they was there. So, once they get, uh, that one done, then how long, how long are we looking for number one leak to be?
They'll need to design, approved by the state, and then the grant hundreds have to be allocated for it, so it could be six, about six months.
Six months out.
These two will help us a lot, though, I think.
Good deal. What's the, uh, what's the warranty on the pumps, on the new pumps that we're dropping in there?
Uh, I ain't really checked it up on that real.
I think on the contract we had just five years, wasn't it?
Yeah.
You remember Thomas, it's on the contract, I think, just five years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Is that parts and labor?
Yeah, five years, I think, so we asked that question at the meeting, and I think he said five years.
On the pump itself is probably five years, I'll have to check. Um, most of the time it's one year on.
Labor.
If that kinda work, yeah, maybe a pump station like that, they got it here.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is that horse gonna stay mounted out there? Or are they gonna take it down?
The horse, the horse to pull the pumps with.
The horse to pull the pumps with, is it gonna stay mounted, or are they gonna take it down?
No, that yellow horse is set, not the number three right now.
Yellow neon green or whatever color it is?
That's coming off of the top. And there's gonna be a big one set next to the side that pull it.
So it'll be a side mount?
Yeah, it'd be like a big side mount.
Will it be electric?
Uh, that I'm not sure.
Pretty sure it is.
Well, we got an electric horse anyway. It's a, like a chain hook, electric, we've got one there in. But the horse that they're putting up, I don't know if it's gonna be electric, or it is just gonna have like a roller on it somewhere where we can put our chain hook, follow it.
And drop it down? Okay, that's all I got, sir.
Jeff Bass, please, sir.
I ain't got really nothing, just down on the water.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Nothing, just down.
Terry?
When the, uh, kind of back what Robert, when you get the lift station number two done, Eddie, uh, what are you gonna see at the plant, like your improvements, sir?
Really, I'll probably, we'll have to do a little bit of study on that also.
So, I guess, to understand the function, it comes from the stuff on Midway and the Green Acres, or did it pumps on on Coors?
Number three, the one on Midway ground, it catches everything out on that side.
Yeah.
Number four pumps to it, and they all the syrup come out there on that end comes from number three. And then it pumps and goes down Midway ground, and it hits, uh, right there at the little bridge on Midway, and it goes down, and then it goes to number two there. So, we're gonna have to do a little bit of study and see what's going on.
Probably a more steady flow.
Yeah, actually, they got on their station.
And Thomas, so could you define the, the water loss pilot program? We got fifty percent of it, is that where they're, what are they doing to say we got fifty percent of it there?
Um, the fifty percent of it, what that means is that the water loss pilot program was set up as the first phase of it is a lot of engineering work, and fifty percent of the engineering work is completed, and what that fifty percent consists of is the mapping of the system, the GIS and GPS coordinates of the, um, valves, meters, fire hydrants, and, uh, the integration of that into a, uh, digital map that then will be transposed into a, uh, hydraulic model of the system that you can then determine what places to put the, um, flow monitors in order to have the, the best representation of the system. So if you have like a system with five different branches on it, and you put a flow monitor on each branch, and this branch begin to rise in flow, you would know you have a leak in that branch. And that's what they're doing with this first phase of it, is getting us the tools, so that we'll know where the water leaks are happening at. Uh, instead of just saying, they're just somewhere in the system, we'll know which area that they're in as we see those start to creep up. So when I say fifty percent complete, what I mean by that is, is that out of all the work the engineers have to do, they've done one half of it so far. And the next phases that are left are going to be the entering the data, the, the legwork's been done, the mapping, the GIS, the geo coding and where the locations are is all complete. Now they're gonna take that, and the, and the acoustic leak detection's complete too. So now they know where the leaks are that are on the ground, and now they know where all the valves and, and pipes are. Now they're gonna take that, enter it into a map, give us a map, give us a list of, of the areas. Then they're gonna take that data and do a hydraulic model where they can take that model and determine where to put the flow meters to get the best, uh, locations for them that will show us where leaks are in the future, once we got these leaks fixed. So it's what we get to walk away with is a, is a way to monitor the system in real time.
So do you see like the water meters and stuff that Blue painted on it, that means they marked it with the GIS and stuff?
Those are shut up wells mostly, aren't they, the Blue?
I was thinking on the meters, about anything water looks like.
They did all the water meters too.
Yeah, they all, they all same color than Blue.
They spray paint them when they redo them, and then they have a tremble unit where they do the lap long, lap even long to go. And then they put that into a GIS map that then has an overlay of, of all that data, and one of those overlays is all the locations and everything. So they're about halfway done, cause they've done the legwork part, now it's the computer part where they have to build it. So they've got all their information, that's the first half is done, so they won't be here in town anymore. Now they're gonna be, instead of an office, entering, entering, uh, data and building a, building a model.
Cause that'd be real nice to, soon as we get that done, then people like Blue has got it on her head, and they could sit down with them and say, you know, I hear this happened.
We did better than that, we did better than that. We had recommended that they hire Blue to go with their survey crew, and they did. And he's been, he has been with them, to my knowledge, not every day, but.
Who's there the most?
Every day. So they, they actually hired him, yeah.
That's a lot of knowledge there, just.
But we didn't lose all of Blue's knowledge.
Okay, Mr..
No, this is not, this is ordered.
Mr. Don don't have anything. Jason's not here, so we'll knock him out. New business discussing possibly approved, the Covering Utilities Water Board connect to the, uh, city financed by grants, where he'll tell you it's a fighting face thing, and he'll, he'll explain to you.
Everyone, define your packets, a double page. On the double page has both locations. One's on, um, by Williams Gap, Montpel Highway sixty-two, and one is on sixty-one, going towards here. We were given this the other day, we met with, uh, C U D, and, uh, C U D, and they, they, uh, basically have some grants that are coming along with the, the funding is coming from, hopefully will be coming from Oregon and Rome County, out of the governor's local support grant. Um, they're gonna apply for that with the, uh, different counties. And this will give us a emergency connection to, um, a good utility, so. I guess tonight, we need a motion to be in agreement to move forward with this project and be okay with it. Money hasn't been discussed yet, except for they're trying to get a hundred percent through Rome and Oregon County. So that's all we know right now.
Trying?
Trying.
What's it gonna cost if it, if try it at work?
Probably won't be feasible, um, if it.
Is that what, a hundred and seven thousand?
No, no.
I think they had a breakdown, six hundred thousand?
Yeah, six hundred.
If we had to pay for every bit of it, dig the, the valves and the piping and connection, the meter and whatever.
So without grants, it really wouldn't be feasible, so for approval tonight, it would just be to agree to pursue the project with grants, do a hundred percent funding.
They'd still take a vote to, to hook into it.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I'll serve it.
Motion you got a second to move feasibility, I guess that's what we call it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion, please?
Are we doing both times? So almost looks like, are they ever gonna run through us and save themselves towards, looks like we're completing them from Harriman to go towards Coalfield.
No, it's coming from Coalfield also.
It's coming from Coalfield.
One center, but it looks like they could use us to go through town and connect the two.
It could be a loop, it could be made a loop, but that's not the intention.
It's not the intention that I know of. Um, it'll have valves on, it'll pretty much always be closed, and there'll be a meter and a valve box, and valves on the side of it, and when we needed water, we would open the valves, cause their pressure is, I did some, did some math on it, a hundred and eleven PSI in one area and two hundred PSI in another area because of how it comes down. And with the elevation height with, uh, you know, how much, you know, every two point three one, uh, feet is one PSI, so as the elevation changes, uh, the pressure goes up as it's, uh, getting higher, or getting.
They gotta put pressure reducers on.
So they gotta put pressure reducers through out, and so we'll never really give them water. They'll be able to give us water, but.
Well, I'm just talking about passing, there's stuff, you don't say, they're feeding through our stuff.
It'll always be closed unless that meter's running, and then we'd be being billed for it, so that, that wouldn't be.
So in that case, you're back feeding. I mean, when it's actually working, we're back feeding, so it kind of spraying.
Yeah, yeah, they get the opposite side of town or to this side, and we do think that this would be a good idea, and the reason is, is that if we do have leaks in our system, which we do, and if we do have leaks in our system, and we're feeding from one side of town to get to the other, it's leaking the whole way. So take it the other way, it would be less water leaked down.
And the pipes the same this end?
Um, they're all, they're all different, they're all different sizes all throughout, it has different flows throughout.
They, I think they come in with a twelve, we have to reduce it down to a six or something like that, a ten.
It was a ten, it was a ten, and we go to the sixes.
Yeah. Joe, I'm sorry.
What Terry's calling and saying about using our system to move the water from Highway sixty-one to the Highway sixty-two area is feasible, but it's my understanding that they acquired the Brushy Mountain Water Treatment Plant at the old Brushy Mountain prison, and they get a good supply of clean water out of some abandoned coal mines where the water accumulates, and so they got plenty of water.
Yeah, they said their plant on Brushy Mountain runs for six hours a day, so they probably are looking for another customer.
So theoretically, we could possibly buy water from Covering Utility District to take care of this side of town.
Yeah, with the, we have this small balcony.
That's true, I mean, it could be done.
Yeah.
They got, right now they got the water.
Yeah.
Eric, what are, what's our obligations now with this versus Anderson County?
We, right now we have no obligations to C U D, uh, as far as.
Is that, is that something which will be in the contract?
It would, to my knowledge, no.
We need to find that out so we don't get in the middle, because Anderson County expects us to buy so much water from them.
Well, we were required to at one time, but I don't think that's the fact.
I don't know if it's changed, I think it's still in effect.
I think since we had to share that, uh, development up to the trailer house development across River, and I think they made a deal to drop that, but I'll make sure, I'll check.
Yeah, cause we don't wanna make sure we don't get.
Yeah, I understand.
Obligations to take water from.
I understand.
Which I'm gonna say is not bad.
See, right now, it's, we got two ten inch lines coming down to Smith Road, is that right? Uh, the water pipe to Smith Road?
We got a ten, we got eight and a ten.
Eight and a ten. If we lose one of those lines, they're, they're pretty close, they're relatively close together, aren't they? It's possible we could lose two, but, uh, we'd be hurt for water if we ever lost that connection.
I'm, I'm just saying, but.
If something happened there, it's.
If them gonna finance this whole thing, and then as soon as they get it put in, they're gonna shut it off, and we never use the water.
No, I don't, I don't think that'll happen. We'll have, lawyers will get involved in the contract.
Well, that, we probably need to make sure we understand before, uh, not obligated to buy so much water from them.
Yeah, I agree.
Not this, not a good thing, but we need to know that up front.
One is a little bit cheaper, but.
Hundred percent know it.
Yeah, that, uh, that's, that's make sure, and I'm for this, don't get me wrong, I just wanna make sure we don't put ourselves obligated to buy water from them.
I agree.
Uh, not that it's not feasible.
I agree. We want, uh, we want it, we'll keep you abreast of it as we go.
I think, kind of chiming in on what Mr. Brown's saying is, we're free to buy from the cheapest customer, maybe.
Yeah.
Or provider.
Well, even that, or we can make the three-way deal where we'll split it, we'll buy, we'll alternate, and check their valves and test their valves, and keeps everything working. Most places are good water, Covering, C U D, and, and C U D, and all the springs water, but, uh, and flooding water, it's all good, but.
I understand. I also, just one other little thing, we took fluoride out of our water twelve years ago. Have they, do they have fluoride in their water?
That's, we're, we're mixing fluoride, fluoride a little bit, it's not near the quantity we had.
Right.
But, uh, I think that.
About fluoride is, is that it's naturally occurring water. Most water has like point three, uh, milligram per liter of fluoride in it, and normally you'll add, you know, like a point four and get it to a point seven to get, you know, the recommended amount of fluoride, so.
We were carrying a six, I think.
Okay, so most of water already has fluoride naturally, and like iced tea has fluoride in it, um, soda sips, so, but if we're buying water from a fluoridated system, then we'll have a blend as well.
I know, you know, that was a controversy.
Yeah, and.
People wanted, some people didn't.
It would still be, if you brought it up.
Right.
At a meeting, at the meeting, it would still be a controversy between the dentists and some, some people, and uh, I know right now, he's trying to hurry up and get my dental work done, where he could set me up with fluoride treatment, he won't be there four hours a night.
Yeah, I understand, I was seeing that, that we went to a controversy over that.
You been in.
And, uh, we took it out, and now if we get water, we put it back in.
I don't know how much they mix up there, they're point four, point six, or whatever. I understand that when we backed them up, we probably backed some fluoride with it. But it's such volume, that's, it's so low, that's.
Mine's saying, well, we don't need to, to get ourselves in another bind on that.
I agree.
I'm all for it.
I'm all for it.
Was you finished, I'm sorry?
I just have one more. If this passes, what's the next step?
Next step will be waiting for the grant. If the grant happens, then the design will happen, and then there'll be probably another vote to, to accept the design, and that we're still on board.
We would have to accept the design, make sure we, you all agree with it.
And accept the grant itself, cause the grant may be a, a match, or it may be, it could be anything. So this is just the first step to say that we're willing to move forward with this on face value of it.
But we're not really, really, we're gonna go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we're not approving the project, we're approving, moving forward with grant funding.
I'm saying four or five months to get to there.
At least.
This could be years.
That's what I'm saying.
I met with him, previous mayor and city manager met with him two years ago, I guess, and I met with him before I came there. And I spent all day down there, and he's gone with the same project then, so, uh, this same drawing was presented at that time. They were just finishing up getting the extension up to, uh, CNC concrete, whatever it is.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. But it'd be, it'll take a year or so. Anything else, sir?
No.
And everybody? Everybody had a chance? Colorado, please, Joe.
Ron Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Don Sillings.
Yes.
Did I mention all business? Do we have any all business? This part, all business too, I guess.
No.
Okay. Discuss, uh, water rate inspection updates, we kind of did that, but go ahead again.
Well, this was actually, uh, harking onto what you had asked last water board meeting about, um, what if someone had a water leak and their, their bill's getting higher as the time goes on, can we pull their water meter? And, uh, so that their bill doesn't go up, and so that it stops water loss as well. Um, I contacted M T A S on them, and, uh, what they had, uh, they, I put the email in the, um, packet. He, he had asked, I had asked him, if someone has a water leak, can we discover it, can we pull their meter, and, uh, stop the leak, and he, he said, no. I would not agree with cutting someone's water off if they're trying to fix the leak and are current with their payments. And it got us thinking about it, and the way that it's set up, say if someone did have a water leak, even if it went on for a month. Uh, now there are some people that don't work in their own best interest, and that's theirs to deal with. But say they went on for a month, and their water bill went up to, um, you know, three thousand dollars. The insurance, the third party insurance then would pay us, if everything goes well, twenty-five hundred dollars. So that would leave them with five hundred dollars, and then there would be penalties and stuff along with it, cause it probably took more than a month to get fixed. And that's the ones that you guys see. Y'all see the ones that are, that are, uh, the worst cases. Most of them we can handle in-house, but we bring them to you guys that are the real big ones, but we want input. Um, and when they do have a large bill, say the, the three thousand, the twenty-five hundred, uh, covered by insurance, which is in paid to us, the five hundred, uh, would then be requested to be broken out over a monthly payment. So we still get everything that we're entitled to, uh, if you sold actually more water, and you don't really wanna make profit off someone's extortion, but in a way, we sort of do, um, and that was one of the questions was, as soon as we find out about it, instead of putting a door hanger on the door, can we just hook up their water right now? And he said he wouldn't recommend it, um, so that's, that's the M T A S, uh, ruling on that one is, but we, we can't do it.
Well, it sounded like you still carried away from what I was getting at the point of, was over the years, which I've heard everything the world, I've been out there, but not necessarily pull it, but if you shut that water off, if you just turn it off, put your little lock on it, they can call you here for, in the day.
Yep.
And you just, you know, you've been notified and turn it back on, it's like they're gonna miss a shower, or maybe it's gonna miss its little bath and that kind of crawl of stuff, but that way you can guarantee you get notification, cause I've heard about the, the guy that didn't hang it, or they hung it in the front door, and it should be in the back, and the old dude couldn't hear the door, all that stuff.
Probably, I didn't think about locking, but they, when he's going around and he detects it, he looks like a high usage. He's gonna hang a tag on the door, just lock it in and knock on the door, so they're not there hanging a tag.
Correct. Then he calls, we go back out and unlock it.
We don't have that.
Like you're talking about.
Well, his exact words were that, uh, cutting, cutting, cutting the water off, so he didn't even think if I pulled the meter, it was the, the turn.
He needs to sit here for ten, fifteen years, seeing by where it's been, and move through all this stuff to get this straight back out after they get a five, ten thousand dollar water bill.
And we have.
We gotta deal with it.
And we've got, we've got one situation coming from you too.
Well, again, that's why this guy needs to tend to be.
We're trying to put it off that collection. Yeah.
I'm just trying to speak for our customers and city people, that you can't tell them we're making money about it.
No, we're not making money, but you're.
Well, I mean, it's not coming out the same.
Yeah.
But I would, for a fact, some of these people have probably died or disappeared before we ever got the, the entire account paid for, could, could be, you know.
Yeah, there's been a few forgiven, like, this past year when the black gentleman passed away, and his neighbor take care of his meals for him, you know.
But, you know, word is more of a lighter, you know, I would really, you know, it's kind of like a deep heart about taxes, something we can cover our ass down, is you gotta give a, a way to get their attention, same thing with the water.
Okay, is that it? Anybody else? Okay, I'm Terry, is discussing possibly approved, the purchase of a dump truck from Hoxton to exceed ten thousand, again, he's got some. He don't have answers, but he's got some covering.
Yeah, we put that number in as a placeholder, cause we didn't know what the prices were gonna be, and we had met with them and looked at the equipment, it's really good equipment, but we ain't got prices, so I ain't got no recommendations to, to buy or not to buy, cause I don't know how much it is, so I guess that's me. Yeah, we put that number in as a placeholder, because we didn't know what the prices were gonna be, and we had met with them and looked at the equipment, it's really good equipment, but we ain't got prices, so I ain't got no recommendations to, to buy or not to buy, 'cause I don't know how much it is, so I guess that's me. But it's really good stuff, though, I have pictures of it in here, it's a, it's a two thousand and one New Holland uh two-wheel drive backhoe, and a nineteen ninety-six Chevrolet dump truck, model CC seven. And uh they're all in good shape, they look really good upon inspection, and.
We, we need another backhoe?
Well, we wanted to see what the price of it was, I was happy for discussion, and they, they do give you a backhoe, actually. We uh, we're gonna budget to buy one, a new one, uh this coming budget year out of the capital outlay, uh line item anyway, but you know, this is a really nice one as well.
If this is the, the dump truck that we was looking at some years or so ago, and the uh, the mechanic that works on it, I think you need to blow up a little bit more, ten thousand.
Well, I didn't know, I just did it as a placeholder.
It's not the old one, I, it was the, we had two.
Yeah, they, this mechanic, uh that does their work, is very exceptional.
We opened the hood on it, but did you see a spot of oil anywhere? Never where it go, it looks like it's ever been leaking, nothing.
I'd like to make you increase that amount.
Yeah, the ten thousand was never a, a real number, it was a placeholder.
How many miles on this truck?
He didn't know.
Forty-four thousand.
Yeah, forty-four on the dump.
How many?
Forty-four thousand.
It's ninety-seven?
Ninety-six. Ninety-six.
Cummins or Detroit?
Cat motor.
It's got the cat, what it got?
I don't know, it's just got the cat motor, that's all I know.
It's got the cat motors and battery shut-off switches, uh.
Is this the one we checked on whenever we get back with us on?
Probably.
Year and a half ago?
Yeah, probably.
Before we bought that one? It is, probably. That they kept ignoring us and ignoring us and ignoring us about.
I bet, if he's had a problem communicating last couple days, getting the price, so.
Yeah, we have good, we have a good court following with him, isn't it?
We got it yesterday, day four, yesterday.
We went there on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Tuesday? What time flights? We went and I looked at, at all three items, we was down there talking about this, and uh he said he would send him a price next day, but he's supposedly got a ghost on or something, and he's at home bound, and he didn't get it done.
Want to go auction it?
Um, they're not gonna.
They're giving us a first chance buy on it, we want a price, they don't have to auction it.
They gotta figure the prices out, and they haven't gotten to us yet.
What is, what is wrong with our other backhoe?
Nothing.
They switched to Skidsteer and uh Mini X.
What's wrong with our backhoe?
Well, it's. Water comes out now, if it's broken now.
Water comes out here.
Yeah, that's the, the big backhoe.
Water's dead, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I took it to test today, give a workup for you.
They had to use the Mini X just to fix water mix till he gets back.
And it still wouldn't hurt for us to have an extra backhoe, because right now, Jeff's backhoe is the only one that we have below gravel.
And also, we're gonna be into this water line fixed, fixing.
Jeff's way up on the other end of town, that makes the water, the water, oh, makes the water run. It'd take him thirty minutes to get back there, hear him back, and then thirty minutes to go back up there, load it up.
What's the condition of this backhoe?
It looks clean.
This was a very good backhoe, um we don't have a price on it, but it's a two thousand and one New Holland.
Put your hours on it?
They didn't have that, they have that blank as the hours, they didn't know.
Hour man's not working on it then?
Yeah, let's do it.
Oh, are we really worried, are we worried that if it does come up, that it disappeared before we get a chance to buy?
I think they're gonna hold it for us, because the gov deals has, it's easier to sell to us than we'd be gov deals, and you'll think about the Sam line of money.
But what I was thinking about then is, why don't we just get a ten? Or we just say not to exceed uh thirty-five thousand, if it goes over that, come back to the board if it goes over that, we're all, we're missing it. Who we got thirty-five thousand on it?
In the water department, we checked it today, and they're quite a bit in, in savings.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Quite a bit, rough figure, quite a bit.
One point two million and so on.
But that's, we pay out of that though, right, salaries, like, like.
That was excluding salaries and.
We take salaries in.
Supplies, uh buying water, uh that's, that's paying all the bills, we.
That's extra money.
Extra.
Uh we're required to uh, how, how the water systems are set up by the comm controller now, is you're required to put a depreciation inside of a, a line item. Our depreciation annually is four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that depreciation is used to buy equipment, or to repair equipment, or to replace equipment, meaning pumps, pipes, uh trucks, backhoes. Just things that have a, a shelf life, like if a truck, you know, lasts for ten years, they depreciated it out, say it's twenty thousand, lasts for ten years, the, the comm controller uh through our auditor has us put two thousand dollars away for that one truck, so that in ten years, when its effective life is over, you have enough cash to buy one as a replacement. Um we, we've been doing that for some time now, and uh just as the upcoming budget's gonna be, you'll see two basic figures. There'll be one that is the figure that is controlled by the, the rate payers, which is all the operations of the system, then you'll have one that'll be a capital outlay, and the capital outlay will be coming from the savings, which is replenished by the um depreciation. So that, we'll go over all that coming up, but yes, that's what that money's for, is to replace equipment.
Utility truck, what's it like?
It was a Chevrolet, it was a, it was a very good one, it wasn't on my list here, he showed it to us at the last minute, what, what was your impressions of it?
It's a Chevrolet thirty-five hundred, four-wheel drive.
About year.
Uh I didn't pay that much attention to it, like, conversation.
Three or four?
It, it's not got any dings on it anywhere.
Or an O four?
Yeah, it's, it's probably not running either.
What it looks like.
I, and I, I took, I took a real quick glance at it, I didn't pay much attention to how many miles it was on it.
Hawks is are clean on it, everything's clean on it.
They're in real good shape, the truck's in good shape.
I like it.
It's got a big air compressor in the back that comes with it.
And it, even I, I opened up one of the side things and it had one of the uh, uh worker jobs uh, uh slide outs in it, it's a really good, really good deal. I think that the thirty-five thousand would be a good starting point, I think that may be a, a really good idea.
Reports I gotta understand is they, they take care of their equipment pretty good.
They got a nice truck.
They, they showed me and Thomas the file on the backhoe.
Yeah.
And the dump truck.
That's it.
Of all of their services, the thing that's written down on it, and each one of them was about this thing.
There you go.
All I, all I feel is I deal with ways that.
What a good thing about that is if they get too high, we got money to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion for it to?
Are we gonna change the?
Need a motion?
Are we gonna change the minutes from trunk, about a dump truck for a backhoe and a truck?
Oh, that's just the agenda.
Yeah, you know, you're gonna play this year, so don't worry.
I'll make the motion, we raised, raised the approval for the purchase of dump truck. Not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, if it does come, we'll cancel before going any further.
I'll second that. We was hoping to have it up there parked in front, you could look at it, crack it up, the truck, but it didn't work out.
That didn't work out good last time, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully it'll work, hopefully we'll still, I aggravated, because I go to hammer quite often, I can pull it and stop pretty easy and I direct it a little bit.
No, I mean.
Okay.
Find it from them, uh, one of the.
So we've got a motion, got a second. Jeff, you made the motion, right? You got the motion second?
I'll second it.
The motion's second, any more discussion? We had a discussion before the motion hits. Okay, coloro, please?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Andy Brown.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
myself.
Yes.
Any, any more business to be brought before the water board? Not needing most of the journey?
I'm moving.
Second.
Got a second, most of the second, those who say aye.
Aye.
That's just, anybody need a water break or?
Yeah.
Before we get started, ten after, so try to be back five minutes or so, please. Ah. Cut your pay if you're not brown. Those are nice of me.
Who's this in the back, back here? Who is that? Guy.
Got a question, who's the, who's the fellow in the back seat?
Who, who is this guy back here?
Must be talking about Ted.
Yeah. I didn't tell him.
Him since uh, oh, I heard.
For Christmas, the last time he wanted some money.
If you show up when I was here, you'd seen me, you'd play like a backhoe alone.
We're in here, three bucks.
He just shows up, he looks up.
Uh, everybody shows up, he always walks up.
I don't think, think you.
Every time.
That's the reason I'm saying.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a time burger, so he's what I'm gonna do.
You'll be getting calls from Denver Lee and Warren.
From who?
From Denver Lee.
Oh, will we?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a phone play with him tomorrow, I think.
Oh, what?
The phone play, which.
I finally approached that throne of grace tonight, ask that you would give us your mercy, give us your justice, give us your blessing. With the pandemic that's hit America, the many people that suffer in many different ways, we pray you would hear the many prayers of the many, many people that have been lifted up to your throne of grace, and that you would deliver us in this pandemic. We pray also that we can come back to you, worship you, and follow you, and honor you once again. That you would give us wisdom and discretion to manage what we have in such a way as to wisely serve our citizens and bring honor and glory to you. We pray for the servicemen and women home and abroad, and give them peace and comfort and strength, and bring them home safely. Let us call this in my son's precious name, amen.
Yeah, amen. Do you need coloro, please?
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Andy Brown.
Here.
Jason Selmer. Don Shelley.
Here.
Terry Holland.
Here.
And of course.
Approval a minute from the April sixteenth meeting. Everybody had a chance to review them or correct them?
I'll make the motion, we're pressing it.
Okay, motion's been made, that the motion, that the minutes be approved is printed, second.
I'll second.
Motion is second and discussion. Coloro, please?
Rob Shelley.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Andy Brown.
Yes.
Terry Holland.
Yes.
Don Shelley.
Yes.
Any citizens have a comments for the council? Okay. I'll give my comments, I thank all the citizens and all the employees of the town for the patience they've had during this outbreak. Going on, and we've had the best we knew how, and hopefully we haven't had too many complaints, complaints, and hopefully everybody's well, and taking care of yourself, and they're still asking that we stay inside if we're, don't need to be outside, but a lot of people are out these days, so just be careful. Keep your distance, wear your mask, and pray about it. Uh I have, city manager has quite a thing, we have quite a bit on the, uh, there's new business, but I have very little to say of it, and again, we appreciate all the cooperation we're having out of citizens and out of the employees. City manager?
Thank you, ma'am. As you know, we've lost the inmate crew, so the streets department has been doing the mowing of the rideaway in the cemetery. This is taking up a majority of the time. In addition, the new tractor has been outmowing throughout, um, well, this week. Uh the new tractor has had a few actuator problems on the boom arm, I want to let everybody know that, uh and also let everybody know that plateau truck and tractor has stood behind their product, and they've sent a technician down each time that it's had a problem, and they've repaired it either that day or early in the morning, the next day, if it was at the end of the day. Um they've done a good job by us, and they've uh really proud of it. Um also, the potholes, they've been uh a top priority, uh they have been, the roads have been destroyed by the rains, and uh we've been using uh Terry Duncan, and he is scheduled to complete the repairs on the four lane in the upcoming weeks. There's a whole list of uh repairs on the four lane, um and that's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir. Thomas, did we talk some time ago about looking at different avenue from using him on kind of heating up our pavement cost?
Yes, and the thing about it is, is on the four lane, it is under contract with uh, with T-Dot, so it's a pass-through, so as we do the repairs on the four lane, if we can get it done quicker by using a contractor.
We get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed, and then all the other roads, uh we've been buying by the ton, the coal patch.
Coal patch.
To do repairs.
Uh there, when we talked about this before COVID hit, uh middle lane probably can't. There, when we talked about this before COVID hit, uh, midway in probably county, turning in right there where that.
I did work towards that. I don't think it's been completed yet.
No, it's breaking off more right there. What used to be about probably eighteen inches is probably eighteen or twenty inches now.
I don't know, great side of the fire park.
Fire side.
It's on the fire side. It's on the.
Fire park.
Fire side right there, as you turn in.
Okay.
Going in on midway right there.
Yeah, I don't think it's been completed, and I know it happened.
I just, I didn't know if it kind of got, okay, I know where the thing got kind of shut down, but now that we're picking back up little by little, we need to kind of, uh, address that and see what we're gonna do about it, so.
It does need to be repaired. I agree. I'll make another work.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'll make one more comment there. You talk about everything shutting down. Some of the ladies in the building's been pulling the weeds around the building here at the end of the day when they get caught up, and we appreciate that.
That's all I have, sir.
And I, and we helped a little bit. City manager, myself, and Teddy helped pull some, but we didn't point here as many as they're doing. But appreciate them for that. Okay, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes, there's an update on the red light situation that was supposed to be started, but now I'm assuming that my knowledge is four lane red light here.
Yeah, the, with the arms. I can get within and find out the next meeting. I don't have it.
Right, I know it's, it was put off, and it's supposed to start sometime in, in April, I thought, when, you know.
They were up here a week or two ago looking at where they're gonna spot it, but the gas company, I don't think it's ever cleared them on the gas.
I got a little information on that. Uh, supposed to start in August. Uh, they've done their evaluations and stuff, and they're supposed to start it in August.
August.
I spoke with Chris Mason, which originally got it started. I spoke with him a couple, uh, probably a month ago or so, six weeks, and, uh, we're talking about it, and he made a phone call, and he said, uh, that they, it's been pushed back to August, but they were doing some preliminary stuff and all that stuff, so.
All right, well, that's.
Well, hopefully by August, we'll see some groundbreaking out here.
Yeah.
Also, there's a, there's a, uh, a turn in out here. Smokers are less than jewelry stores, and it looks like the, the drain is stopped up, and, and our track hole, the track hole was out there, and it kind of dug it out to the, with the, the, uh, cover check.
Okay.
And it looks like somebody has cut in there and flattened it, or it stopped up, it still holds water. And if you're kind of turning in there and somebody's coming out, it, it, it needs to be looked at to maybe extend a little bit.
Okay.
To have, uh, you know, a wider area, and I don't know exactly our responsibility to clean out that, uh, uh, ditch line, or not necessarily ditch line, but the cover itself.
Yes, sir. Um, we are under contract with T-Dot to maintain the, uh, drainage.
Okay, well, it's stopped up. You, you can tell the water's still standing, but they did dig it out, up to the, for the, the, the cover to end it, and it looks like about ten inch drain line. But, uh, it, it, it just stand, and when it does rain, you know, it, it backs up, and, uh, I just wondered if we could help them out with that, uh, as far as how, how you get in there, shovel or whatever to dig it out, especially that cover.
Well, we got a high pressure trap. They can wash it out.
Well, but, but you just washing them down to the, to the next big drain.
Well, we, we'll have to pick it up eventually, but.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that, uh, well, it looks like it's just mud, and either rocks or, I know, here somebody has tried to turn in there and, and didn't make the turn no good and, and flatten the, the edge of that, uh.
Top.
Cover. But, uh, I appreciate you looking at that, and other than that, as I said, uh, uh, I'd like to also, I talked with the, the, uh, the lawnmower operator of that new deal. Is there a way we could get an extended warranty, just to be safe?
Yeah, that boom arm's been the real problem. It's been the actuators on the boom arm. Uh, I think they had gotten rusty where it had sat, and they replaced them.
Well, I'm just saying it's got a year or two year warranty on, on parts and labor.
I can find out about it.
Find out and see what, uh, you know, uh, if there's, uh, something feasible to get a, uh, maybe a extended warranty.
Now, the tractor itself isn't working great.
Yeah, it's just the careful part.
It's that, it's the joystick and the boom arm that's gonna be the problem, the actuators.
Kind of my new freezer works good, but I don't see no work.
Yeah.
So, you know, extended warranty comes in, comes in handy, and then just a, a, just a, a price, and because, uh, that's expensive piece of equipment. And, uh, you know, once it, uh, starts getting past that warranty part, then we're, that's what you do. And we don't need that because it does set up for several months, you know, uh, in the winter time, and if you check into that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, that's all I got right now. Teddy was talking about the new side hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the new.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, uh, it's, it's.
It had, first problems we had with it, it's got some electronic relays out in the, where the, where the cutters at on the top, and those were corroded. And so it quit one day, and they had to come out change one, the next day had to change another. They weren't sealed. I said none of them aren't. I still never had problems with them, but he taped seal those, so.
Yeah, like those, like those trucks, they, they came out every time, but had problem with it either that day, or if it was late in the day at like four o'clock, the next morning really early, they've always got us back up and running. And they took all of them out, and they replaced them, and even gave us a piece of bear, because, uh, they've never had this happen before, and we're the lucky ones. We're the lucky ones.
That's why we nervous already.
Don't take it so bad. They'll take care of it.
The tractor, it's the, uh, the, is it Trail King?
Trail King.
Is that right? Train King?
Train King.
It's the Train King that harmed. It's, it's giving the problems, not the tractor.
They're adding.
Then we have a lot of fad or something.
No, they have some.
A lot it has.
No, I've run that five, almost five years and never had.
This one, first, they'd have them first five hours?
Yeah, have them first, and the truck, yes.
That new design.
It must be, yeah.
Okay. Was you finished, sir?
Yes, sir.
You're up, Mr. Bass. I was gonna turn on you, but I was doing how you said.
That's fine. That's no big, uh, dude, since we're over the four lane, the curbs, who makes the curbs up where the turn offs are? And, yeah, I've, I've taken last week, you know, some of them's got paint on them, that's a little tough. You know, like, yeah, around the curbs.
I would say all painting has to do with, with T-Dot. All we do is just the drainage and the metal.
All right, so, yeah. Well, can we check in with T-Dot and see if they can kind of.
Yes, sir.
Remake the curbs, you know, right around the corners. Their, their, the yellow's gone, so.
And it's hard to see.
And some of the people, uh, stopping him out, it's, they, they're having trouble seeing exactly where it's at, you know, so they either run up on it or whatever.
These would be the San Bo, I guess what they call it.
It wouldn't hurt to do the major ones, sure.
Safety yellow.
Yeah, safety yellow.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Um, has the cemetery been mowed this week?
No.
It's your mother's day Sunday, so we're gonna catch some heat over there. And it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so I guess. I guess that crew though.
Yeah.
Uh, me and Roberts changed, switching out on this one with the, the trailer problem on East Tri count. I know they quit selling cars, and now they deal with used trailers, or it just seems to be getting worse.
It is getting worse, isn't it?
I.
I mean, it's hard to, there's certain bad example. How are we gonna get on somebody and cut a car driveway if we got that mess?
Let me touch on it a little bit. I've got with, uh, Lynn in Kingston, and there's gonna be a lot of write-ups, so it's gonna be fixed. That's gonna be one of them. Several houses on Kingston Avenue, that's gonna be one, two, three, and there're gonna be a time limit on how long they have to get it done, and we're gonna do it. And it's just, all we're gonna do is get the lawyers involved, and if they ask you on the court, they'll go to court, but, uh, we'll have to, if we have to order them to do it, we, we're gonna give them the order. I think Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we give them the notice and the days it's printed that we give, they have to comply.
Yes, but if they don't comply.
Then we got.
Then the town has the choice of writing a citation in the Auburn Springs City Court, which carries fifty dollar fine and court costs. But each day is a continuing offense, and so the building inspector would have to write a citation.
Yeah.
To the extent that the property owner's afraid of running up a thousand dollar fine and costs for twenty days of non-compliance, that can be quite effective. To the extent the property owner's absentee or the property's run down, he can care less, then we're just writing paper and creating a debt that may not be collected for a long time. The other options do, do, I could do another Kingston Avenue property and go into, uh, Rome County Chancery Court and ask for a condemnation order. And if it's a time, if all goes well, the town will seek one, and then the town gets carried down.
Well, what about, I'm sorry, man.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What about these trailers out here, though?
Excellent, we're done with that.
Same thing.
We're done with that.
See, the, the city court, whether I'm the judge or somebody else is the judge, has no authority to issue injunctions and make people move things. It is a court of what's called limited jurisdiction. The Rome County Chancery Court is a court of general jurisdiction, which means you can get your injunctions out of that court, some, perhaps circuit court too, but I think it better be you to file it with the Chancery. And that is, uh, more time consuming and more expensive, uh, and procedurally a little bit more involved, but the city attorney is not due.
So, even though it's in Anderson County, it would still go to the Rome County?
I think in that instance, you would file in Anderson County, Townwood, before the Chancery Court.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Well, I have a question on that. Is the property that they're setting on, is it, is it deemed commercial or residential or non-use?
It's owned commercial, yeah.
Yeah, we resumed that a few years ago.
So, so he has a business license?
I don't think he has a business license for trailers. He gonna have one for cars, but it's.
Well, a business license is not a license to do business. It's disneyed. It is a receipt for the payment of grocery receipts tax. See, if you have a hundred thousand dollars of the grocery receipts, you'll pay a tax on that. You could have a hundred thousand dollars in grocery receipts, a hundred and ten thousand dollars in expenses, which means you lose money. That's the way the laws are in, and the state would collect, uh, a tax, and the city would also get a small percentage of that tax.
So, on your option A, is that something we can help you with, or is it gonna be more of the state or something?
Oh, what, uh.
To get your fifty dollar fine at A.
Well, if, say he, he has five citations, uh, ten citations, which is, and he's found guilty on all ten, he's got five hundred dollars in court costs, uh, and say a thousand dollars, excuse me, five hundred dollars in fines and a thousand dollars in court costs, a total amount of, of fifteen hundred dollars. The next step is to find out if he has a bank account. To do that, you need his name and social security number, and hopefully a bank account number. And then you can apply in the Auburn Springs City Court for a garnishment of that bank account. And if there's fifteen hundred dollars in that bank account, then the bank gets the garnishment, the, the bank will send the fifteen hundred dollars to town. If there's no money in the, in the bank account, the town gets nothing. If you can find an automobile that he may own that does not have a lien against it or a mortgage, you can then get what's called a writ of execution, where you go out and tow his car away and sell it nice and best bidder to collect your money. It's a collection process. And sometimes people do not have, uh, the surplus cash or the paid for cars. They put property under people's names or other's names. And that's just for proof because they don't own anything, because their neighbors and friends and relatives own everything, and they just use it. In fact, they own it, but it's not their name. It's, it's, you gotta be diligent. You gotta be thorough. You gotta be able to scratch around, find all this stuff out. And that, that, then involves more time, and I've got, you got a state and city attorney, two hundred fifty dollars an hour. For example, he can build the registered deeds and see if they've got land. If, when, okay, that's three hours. That's six hundred dollars for the research time, let's say. So, there are remedies, but it's not inexpensive. It can get expensive. You put the money to it, and you'll get results. I mean, that's, I don't wanna sound, you know, crass about it, but that's, that's just, which is the way it is.
Just wanna kind of get the camera picture.
Now, see, the next thing is with those trails on the four lane, you can get the court order, and the landlord or trailer doesn't move them. The town could try to file petition to put him in jail, and of course, that's more time and expense and so on to be in the town, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but that's the way it works. The town possibly could get an order, court order, allowing the town to move those to a public location outside the town, but the town will have to foot the bill for the tow bill, with the idea of getting reimbursed from the landlord, which may or may not happen. I've dealt with all those issues, in landlord tenant problems and repossession problems for the banks and stuff like that.
Would you take a temporary vacation with, like, a fifteen day lease? Before they go to selling this truck car, and it looks like they just drop them off.
That's what the building inspector, see, the building inspector could say, uh, he goes out and say tomorrow and says, I'll come back in a week if you don't have this, this, this done. And then he comes back and what is not done, then he writes the citation, gives him thirty more days, come into court, see what happens.
Has he found him last week, or he getting?
He hasn't been in contact with him, Mark.
That's good. Four, three more weeks.
I guess he has to sell the cars, that, of course.
He must be hiding it if he can't be found.
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll.
I guess everybody drives by, and he's a cop, and called the chief and say, I see him here, uh.
Yeah.
Guy eyes on or something like that, I guess.
We can put a bird dog on him, maybe.
My last comment is, uh, welcome to new pharmacy. You may know more of me, man. I've been fortunate enough not to eat medicine yet.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Leach's playing.
Yes, we do.
Always glad to see new business.
Yeah, we do welcome the Leach Pharmacy opening at, uh, at the turn off there midway in, in the four lane. Hopefully he'll be very successful there, have a long lasting business there. Thanks, sir. Okay, you're up, sir.
Yeah, I got a couple of things I want to bring to you on. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Rome County, Dennis Ferguson, the pavement West Road. Part of it's in the county and part of it's in the city, but they paved the whole thing for us, which comes in the cemetery road off of, I guess that's over there.
Over here and now, wasn't it?
So, I'd like to thank them for that. Uh, speaking of potholes, have you been down Cemetery Road lately? It is, he does bad, both ends. I call them out bad, bad. Uh, this is a little far away from Christmas, but I've had a lot of citizens ask if we would light those trees at the flag court. Those cedar trees. I've had quite a few citizens ask if we would light those up for Christmas. You know?
I don't think that'd be a problem. Do you?
Uh.
No, sir, it wouldn't be a problem at all.
Yeah, we'll have to start early on that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a hookup there.
Yeah, I know. I said we'll have to start early. We used to decorate a couple of those, but.
Yeah, it's just lives, you know, it's.
We don't think to, I'll call you after.
Jim, you talking about this plate and the curves or the islands?
Well, the islands, the curves.
Ah, yeah.
Island curve, uh.
I didn't know if you meant the all the islands, now they definitely.
Basically, were the turn ins, for the people at the turn.
Right.
You know, they're, I've had people say, you know, they don't, they can't see at nighttime.
Right.
They run up over on it.
And that's true. I, I didn't, I didn't know if you meant everything, you know.
Just the main, I mean, that the main places like food city, uh, the gas stations out there, all the general, all them. That's all there.
Well, we don't have that many concrete curbs, so.
Please, chief?
I'll get all night under one.
Oh, okay. Chief's gonna go down. You gonna wait till later, or have you got anything, sir, department?
I can wait till later.
Old business, any old business that we know of? New business, item one, discuss and possibly approve weapons purchased for the police department.
I put, uh, put in everybody's packet. Uh, last month, we sold a bunch of weapons we had in evidence, and we got eight thousand dollars out of them. And part of that, and part of the orders and the judges said that to be used for buy equipment. Right now, we're carrying, you know, M-sixteens, military M-sixteens. We've got from the government that belonged to them. What I'm wanting to do. What I'm wanting to do is go away from that two-two-three round and go to a nine-millimeter round, which is not as fast and a poking around us, if you're in town, around all the buildings and houses. And if you carry the same magazine, there's our, there's the pistols we carry now and ammo. And I found, we've priced them around different places and we finally found some out of, uh, Faxon Farms in Cincinnati, Ohio, uh, for seven hundred and thirty-one, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars a piece. Now, I'd like to get permission, if we can, to use that eight thousand dollars and buy ten of these.
I'll make a motion if we allow it to use the eight thousand dollars to purchase the weapons this police department needs to do their duty.
Seven.
Our motion, we got a second, any discussion?
Curious, uh, when they qualify, if you get them, what would be your range? Hundred yard or?
No, not for these, these would be forty to fifty yards. Same, same as with the two-two-three, is that when we, when you qualify, it's forty to fifty yard range.
Or the?
What are you gonna do with your two-two-threes, chief?
They've gone to the trailer government, they're going in the closet.
So you just store them?
Yeah, until they, we get them back, tell them, they're, they're fully automated.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they're fully automated.
In case it gets rough.
Yeah. And part, part of their new, new Romans on those is it's gonna cost us about four hundred dollars to be able to carry one of them in a car by new locking mechanisms that locks them so that if it's ever stole, stolen out of the car and took out of it, that it destroys the gun. So it's, we were already looking at going to these nine millimeters and then got that order. It's just easier to go ahead and swap and go to these.
And they're not auto?
No.
A motion and a second, right? Any more discussion? Call the real please.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Fairholme.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, y'all got our monthly report from last month. I mean, with everything going on, we've, our, uh, activity's been down, but we're, uh, we're gonna try to go back full blast starting next week and since everything's getting over, so everything should start picking up a little more. Thank you, Alan.
Yes, sir. Item two, discuss and possibly approve East Tennessee Development District ETBD renew contract and continue providing local planning services. That's a letter you got with, I believe it's a cost of seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars or something like that.
That's the guy that we paid to.
Do the planning commission.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, Dan Hall is our representative here in Auburn Springs.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll take it.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion? Call the real please, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Fairholme.
Yes.
Discuss and possibly approve driveway cover repair options at eight twenty-one Main Street. This is Benny Phillips. Uh, you got a photo on that. And I looked at it again today, she keeps calling and we go, we look at it and it's, it has washed again, but it's kinda not, it's mixed between her property and her property. They're in the curb. Has everybody got a copy of that? I can't even find.
We, we, we got some work on that several times, haven't we?
Long time ago, quite a few months ago.
Yeah, I think you dug a big hole there, but.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's washing out pretty good and.
This property is really unique in that if you look on this map, number seventeen, uh, is her property. Number sixteen is the city's property that contains her driveway. For some reason, the city owns the property that, uh, has her driveway and the culvert on it. I guess some years ago, they had a negotiation for the city to allow her to do that. Um, the washing out, majority of it is on private property. Some of the washing out is on city property, but the washing out on city property is, is, uh, it could be undermining the culvert, so there's also some large rock there, so it could be, uh, strong. I'm not an engineer to be able to give that determination. But, um, I've met out there with her, Omar's met out, the mayor's met out there with her. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about it. Uh, I'd like to float an idea and see how everybody feels about it. That number seventeen right there, that little parcel of property, I would give the idea to give that quarter acre to her and us get out of the driveway business. Um, we have to take our long arm mower, clear back the bushes that grow over. We're responsible for that. And I don't really know why we have a driveway, uh, and a culvert crossing when she has road frontage on this side where she could have put a culvert in and a driveway in. Why it's through the one piece of property that we own, I don't know, but it makes it so that we're liable for a lot of stuff. And I don't know how much that property.
We give property away.
I, I, I'll, whatever you guys want, but.
We're one of our.
But right now, we're, we own property that is the only, is her access, even though she has road access, we still.
Has she agreed to this, Ron, or?
No.
No. That, that would be my.
Here's where it's lost, but it's, it's fell in here again this past week. Not here, and that's mostly in our square.
If she don't want it, we can't post her taking it.
Well, I know, but are we gonna fix it?
I think it's a tall.
It's pretty big.
Forty-eight inches, I think.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
Mm-hmm. It's great, it's big time. You've looked at it, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, it just needs some rock.
Yeah.
For the life of me, I can't figure out.
Don't, don't live.
I can't figure out why on a main road with road frontage, we control this apartment, they could have put it in on their own property. I just don't know why it's on the city's.
I don't know why they put that street in.
Oh, he's got an old roadway across the way?
No, no.
It's in the main street.
It's on down. Right of way, by the cabinet shop, the right of way is by it, but the city doesn't have to build a road. They can, you know, if someone asks to build a road, you have the right to refuse, right of refuse.
Generally, the city would have a deed for that, get a copy of deed and find out the city got it.
Yeah.
But it's.
I mean, I thought that we should be the, right now with front of it, all the way up to there.
It used to be Main Street.
It should be the old road.
Yeah, there's, there's the main road, still there.
Yeah.
But then there's a, a right of way right here, there's just nothing on it. But then the city owns number sixteen and that's where her driveway is. But her driveway could have been on her property with her own culvert going across to the main road frontage right here. But somehow they, they negotiated to have it on city property and somehow we get to maintain it. I think it's not a very good deal is what I'm saying. And it would be better if we got out of that deal, even if we had to give a quarter acre of land away, it still would be better than having the, the responsibility for the next twenty years.
But the one thing is, right, so you, we tried to give it to her, she don't take it, we gotta fix it.
She don't, we play it because.
We go down, we go down and fix it and then say, figure out how we can transfer it over to her somewhere after it's fixed and get it transferred out of the city's name into her name. Then we don't have to worry about it at all.
That'd be the right thing to do.
Let's find out if we actually own it or not.
We do, hundred percent.
She's not gonna do that, she's not gonna do that, but she wants us to keep it.
I dare to.
When's the last time you looked at it, Mr. Brown?
Uh, it'd been a week ago.
Well, it's washed more sense out there, it's got some fresh powder.
Best I can remember, there used to be another house up there. I'm not sure, I think it may have been tore down. But that was, that, that may be the road to go on into that house. And somewhere in there in that time period that she built this house, that, uh, they may want to take that road away from her. And that's where she come in and said, well, you gotta give me a road 'cause there's a road there. I don't know that to be true, I just thought it was another house. This house was built in the, uh, I wanna say sometime in the, in the sixties.
Yeah.
Somewhere in the seventies, seventies. But, uh, she's not gonna give, uh, take that property because that means she's gotta fix it herself. And right now, she said, we gotta fix it, and she's gonna sue us if we don't. But let's find out if we all actually own it or not.
We do.
We do.
You got the proof of it, that we own it?
We went on Tennessee property data and it has us listed as the owner and, uh.
We can go to courthouse and check it.
Well, keep in mind that once you get off the internet saying that we own it is nice, but it's not what the internet says we own, it's what the deed records say.
Right.
But we'll confirm that we own it, of course.
Yeah, and we might find out how it hurts as well.
I suspect the town got that in by the fault of the back tax sale. I mean, I don't know that.
They, they need to.
But that's, and see, if, if there were a house there that got torn down and whoever had it didn't want to pay the taxes on it, they didn't get paid and the town bought it. And see, the reason that she's got that right of way there is because there was a culvert there and for her and Carlos to put in a culvert on, on their property would have been very expensive to put it in.
I think she told me Walz and Coke would put that culvert in for, for nothing. And did, that, did degrading and everything.
What does she mean it's called Walz and Coke?
Yeah, business.
Are they still around? Might be one of the grand, great, grandkids around maybe.
Well, now, what about that Jason's property? There's a property, an acre there that feeds the main line coming off the highway and, uh.
We got two streams there.
It runs through, the best I can remember, the Ziegler property.
Yes, does.
And it seemed like their fault by not fixing theirs up to make all that flood into, into her, because it's all grown up.
Yeah, it is, it's.
Uh, and, uh, I don't know, you know, what the status is other than it's there.
Well, it's gonna take several loads of riprap or whatever to fill it, to hold it back and it's, it's washing pretty good. It's about like Indian Creek up there and we hadn't heard about it in a while neither, but that's another subject.
This goes back and goes under the railroad track right past, right down past where that house is down there, the garage.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there, right now, there's a tunnel that goes under the railroad tracks. It goes back to blends in with Indian Creek and then goes around to, uh, Arrowhead Park.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Can I suggest something, get this going? Can Thomas speak to Ms. Phillips and see if there's any resolution you could come up with by the next meeting?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll meet with her.
Yeah, we sure will. Um, do you want me to bring up that we would consider giving it to her? Because otherwise, we're gonna be right back here just back.
Well, yeah, I would, I would, they might have to sell it for a dollar or something.
Because.
I think we have to make a deal here.
You can't give it away.
Yeah, because sell it for a dollar would be worth a lot more to us.
I'm sure, I'm sure, Miss, they may have digged enough, they may not be terribly advantage to dig too much.
Well, it'd be great if the city didn't on that. That'd be the ideal situation, because we shouldn't be in the driveway business.
And so, we can't use that property for anything, I don't think.
It's useless, it's a.
Well, we could use something there.
Yeah, block her driveway. Yeah, we could.
Put a fire hall.
Well, and the worst part is.
It's lost, gets that too.
Something greater, nowhere to drive out here.
Put a lit jam with them.
Got the camera on there, right?
We hope we're gonna move all there.
Any, any more discussion on that? We don't need to vote on that, I don't think, so we just make a deal and see if we can bring it up next time. Okay, item four, be discussed and possibly approve a short resolution questioning Senator Ken Yeager, Representative Ken Calpin, Ron Travis to introduce legislation allowing Rome County schools to start Labor Day Monday, September the seventh, twenty twenty as a safety measure concerning COVID nineteen. All of the cities has agreed to that, they just want us to tack on to it.
So will.
Got a motion, got a second? Did you get the motion?
It was a second, okay.
Uh, the motion's saying, any discussion?
Does this add their, on to the end of the year or are they just gonna worry about this? End of the season, you know, or does it don't really matter to us?
It doesn't, it, uh, it's, it's a perfectly, it's a start date is what it is.
Everybody's a mom, are they gonna take it up, you know?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
It don't really matter to us.
I don't know if they're gonna combine it, they're making it a short year.
Well, years ago, when you started that date, you didn't have one day on fall break and didn't have spring break. And see, if they did that, they'd have to probably adjust the following spring break.
Yeah. They didn't explain it, they just sent us a thing and asked us to, they sent a copy of the resolution, I think, you know? We'll have to tack on to it. Uh, any more discussion? Call the real please, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Fairholme.
Yes.
News item five, discuss and possibly approve spring cleanup dates and new guidelines due to COVID nineteen.
Yeah, one of the dates that I was looking at was May eighteenth to the twenty-second, putting dumpsters out by the shop where they go over the bridge right there where the employees park, just have them move, have dumpsters put there and have people bring it to the shop, because we don't have the manpower to patrol the streets and everything.
We haven't heard nothing about it, and that's gonna be made for.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that'll be item nine. I do have some information, but it's not, you know.
You said, well, May what?
Uh, uh, eighteenth to the twenty-second.
Just four and eight?
Uh, that should be a week. I mean, look, I had that wrong.
You've got two weeks.
Four and eight?
Yeah.
What about, what about our seniors that can't carry their own stuff out?
I don't.
I guess they'll have to give us a call, see if we can do it, I don't know.
I don't know how to do that, Don, because, uh, we don't have the manpower, we only have.
There's a lot, there's a lot of them that does that.
I know, we only have a supervisor and two, uh, crew workers.
I'm talking about the people that's just physically not able to do it.
Um, I mean, if, if they were disabled, we could do that, we could probably help them out, but we don't have.
I, I know we don't, I understand that.
I think we could do it, you know, a few and hopefully we wouldn't miss anybody, but they did, on a call basis, we have to decide how much they got. Some people have contractors come and cut it and stack it, then, you know, we're not really supposed to holler that anyway, but.
Are we gonna have one for brush or?
Not, not.
You don't want a brush for this time?
Not at this time.
Well, a lot of people start trimming back, say, they're gonna stack it. They're gonna stack it for streets.
One of the, if they were to trim on their own property, if they were to call in for a burn, I mean, that'd be the best thing to do for brush, just to burn on their own.
Up these brush piles.
They're already there, they're in the fire line.
They don't know, uh-uh.
They, they, they several, they several brush piles out. Is this, you said, where's you gonna be at, up here at the city, at the garage?
I can cross the bridge inside the Yodel Gate.
Do we need to get something out on the social media to explain what they can and can't? So we gonna have a bunch of?
Yeah, we'll, I'll leave it on, yeah.
You know, some way to get the word out, you know? You're looking for that, because they'll be bringing everything out there. And put a guard out or something.
We usually give them two weeks, so.
Then we can run it from the eighteenth to the twenty-ninth, that Monday to that Friday, next Friday.
All right, that, they give them two weeks, about.
We're up for Memorial Day.
Yeah. Is that gonna be twenty-four hour open or just business hours?
Just business hours, because we'll be there to maintain it.
At eight to four-thirty or you gotta have a what?
You gonna lock that bar gate in?
Yeah, that's an option, if you guys wanna leave it open, we can, but when it comes out, out of our.
No, no, they'll be bringing everything, their tires, paint, everything. That, that would work.
Freezer raters.
Social media, what you can ask.
Okay, so we set it eighteenth to the twenty-ninth, if that's agreeable with everyone. And, uh, those that's handicapped, we was trying to assist them to best of our ability.
And just gonna be brush?
No, only.
No, garbage, just brush, not, not.
Well, it's, I got some of those brush, because nothing but the brush piles, being sitting there for.
Well, couldn't be initially having like a brush pile where the city guys would do it right there on the side?
And chip it?
We got, we got the chip, we got the chipper and the, and the.
The thing of it is, is that all their time's been taken up by mowing and then other work orders come over and, you know, potholes as well, so, uh, it's really, I don't want to overextend them and make it so nothing gets done that, that's, uh.
Nothing gets complete.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, any more discussion? More discussion, call the real please, Joe.
They made a motion, yeah.
I thought we did make a motion. I'm sorry.
Motion, we have it for the week, uh, starting.
Eighteenth.
From the eighth, from the eighteenth to the twenty-eighth. The night. Could you add, uh, and we'll assist handicap.
And we will assist the handicap if they call and we will give them a, a ballpark time.
You got a motion, need a second?
No more to plug, pick up the truck, love.
I ain't moving to the left.
Got a motion, need a second?
Oh, I'll say.
Got a second?
Okay.
Any more discussion? Call the row please, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Terry Hall.
Yes.
Uh, Don Schellner.
Yes.
Okay, number seven.
Sixteen?
No, uh, number six.
No, in, uh, sixteen.
Eighteenth to the twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, eighteen to the twenty-ninth of May.
Outsters at the city garage, uh, city hours on the, which is, uh, eight to four thirty.
Okay, number seven, or number six, discuss a possibly approved updating cemetery rules allowing tombstones.
Yes, sir, um, this has been a lot of discussions been going on with the cemetery. I know whenever we first came up with, um, the rules for cemetery, one of the recommendations was to have flat and or flush markers. So that the difficulty of going to cemetery throughout the years would never increase, it would always stay that the way that it is. But there's been an adverse effect of that in that nobody will buy any lots with us. The lots are only five hundred dollars of the Oliver Springs Cemetery. But we're having a hard time setting lots. We even had people that have been filling the paperwork out in the middle of it, find out, once we present them with the rules and then get up and leave. So what I'm requesting is I've contacted the cemetery board and because of the COVID nineteen, having a meeting wasn't practical. So I asked everyone if they were okay with the city council making the decision without a recommendation from the cemetery board. But what the recommendation was gonna be would be to strike paragraph four subsection A, the words that say, that strike the words that say. And must be a flush or flat with the ground grave marker to strike that sentence. Within, within, in fact, allow tombstone freestanding markers, everything will stay in that except for, uh. All, and everybody was good with it and all I need is a motion and a vote to strike that. And must be a flat or flush grave marker from the rules and.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Call the row please, Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Kenny Brown.
Yes.
Terry Hall.
Yes.
Don Schellner.
Yes.
Item seven, discuss a possibly approved budget amendments. Will be handed out before the meeting and they're on Oliver Springs, uh, better yet.
I make a motion. We approve the ordinance for Delaware Springs to. For the Delaware Springs, you know, fund has a integral budget and the charters follow up to be passed. With increased, decrease of the following charts, the fund numbers listed will be passed.
Got a motion, need a second?
I'll say it.
Motion's second, discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
How come we just got this thing five minutes before, where you don't have no time to go over and find out where these monies are going and what these dollar amounts are?
Rich Chief, when, when did you put these out today?
These just got finished up.
No, I didn't get them finished until Tuesday.
I think they were, I thought you, when'd you get your packet?
It's mostly not new money, it's just adjusted from one budget item to another budget item.
What, what's a hundred and two thousand dollar bank loan?
Many X, there, we've added it into the budget, but that's not what it's gonna be.
Not many X, that's, that's the long arm hold.
That's a tractor, remember, it was a hundred and two that we got, but it's only cost eighty-seven?
That's what I'm talking about, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Yes.
But, but why is it, why does it say a hundred and two on here instead of actual eighty-seven thousand?
Because we got a hundred and two thousand that we had to report into the budget. And then we got to rack them a check back for fourteen thousand to the difference.
That was brought up last meeting.
Because they already had that money made up in the long fix, then they come up with a different amount.
That was brought up last meeting, we covered that, that that would be a payback on the, the excess of the tractor.
Where does it show that on here?
It'll be the next.
Shows, uh, under credit, under credit. See it on the credits on second page, bottom page?
I said capital, I live a hundred and two.
Okay, that's where it comes from. That's where it come, that's where it's at.
Also COVID, not paying, what do we get, what is that for?
We was recording hours differently in case FEMA decided to help us out on the table. We wanted to keep track of the hours that we didn't have people working.
Now, this doesn't make the budget short or over, this is actually just reallocating where the money is supposed to be to make the budget accurately reflect what is actually going on in the budget itself. So it's correcting, it's either corrections to the budget on items that went over or have went under, it makes them actually reflect that.
Like that COVID nineteen you're talking about, that was, that's coming out of the regular payroll fund. We just wanted to separate that, just to keep track of that.
It's really a housekeeping thing to make it so that the, the, the debit and the credits are all there, so that money that was coming short reflects it, it's gonna be short. The money that's going over reflects it's going over, it's really just moving a bunch of, bunch of stuff around.
This is quite a big part of the end of the budget here.
Where do we stand right now on the actual budget and the actual dollar figure in the banks today?
The money in the bank stash, I bet? It's like six hundred thousand. We're fine on cash.
What's that, undetected?
That's the undetected.
That's, that's not actual cash.
That's familiar?
That's not, that's not cash, that's called paper figures.
And then it's got credits over here at sixty-seven thousand, but undetected negative.
That, you take money from this and this and this and then you move it around.
But you're actually moving something we don't have.
See, that two separate, that undetonated fund balance is not real money. We're not having to move cash.
Okay.
We're not moving cash.
Just moving numbers.
Yeah, this just makes the actual budget that y'all approved look, as a reflect, what's actually going on with the real money. It makes it line back up. Well, there'll be another one of these too, you're really supposed to do these a lot. It's kinda like saying in your personal household budget.
Yeah, we used to do them like once a month.
Yeah, you normally, you, you did, yeah, you normally do.
I don't know why we quit, why we quit, but we used to do one like.
Because I've been covering over most of the time in Fort Worth, and since Fort has slowed down, I've got to transform something.
How do we do on the, uh, tax play?
Okay, um, we were talking about that just today. Um, where it looks like is I think it was, was March's numbers are in. And, uh, we took, um, from July one of two thousand nineteen to March thirty-first, I suppose, the thirtieth of, uh, two thousand nineteen. And compared that to two thou, to June, I mean, July first to, uh, March thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty. Compared the two to see what sales taxes are gonna look like. And, uh, we're only four percent off what we were in two thousand nineteen on sales taxes. Now, in terms of taxes, I think we're at ninety-six percent, uh, put in, so it's, it's not.
We're going to.
Percent of the sales tax, I mean, I mean, of the property tax, but of the, uh, uh, sales tax, it looks like it's trending a little lower. But with the pandemic going on and everything shutting down, but I think what has happened is, is that a lot of people have, um, sort of been shopping local a little more and I don't know.
Some got stimulus money, some spent, bought up on groceries ahead of time.
I can't predict any of it.
Store it, I think the reason the taxes were up, but for instance, in February, March, it stayed up, is grocery stores and stuff did a lot of business.
They did a lot of business.
They got the extra stimulus money in and then some people, uh, drawn unemployment stock, they're drawing that much money and they spent more.
Well, I asked you to hear about the property taxes, I heard like Knox County was kinda like giving, uh.
Uh, uh, property tax probably is not, is important, it's more than forty.
Ninety-something percent.
Ninety-seven percent, yeah.
I mean, I heard in some big cities, they'll give lax on the flexing, which I didn't understand, though this didn't happen though after the due day new ways.
We're, we're gonna be short this budget, let's not even, uh, sugarcoat it. There's been a lot of things going on that has been different than what normal business is in the entire world. Uh, but I talked to a city the other day and, uh, from another state, and, uh, they're one point three million shot. So we're not gonna be that bad, you know, we'll be a couple, a couple, you know, tens of thousands.
Yeah, but if we shut down our spending right now, like Kingston, um, we can't buy enough in the fact of, May first, all our POs were canceled. It's on an emergency, gotta have nothing.
I mean, you could do some, I agree with that.
Yeah. Now, uh, the utilities are, are sitting a lot better than the general fund. The general fund, uh, I haven't, I haven't quite got a, a picture of it because Ramon and I have been talking about this nonstop and we, we can't.
I can't get a true picture, so I should get those questions and put in computers so we can actually look at actual.
How many active POs we still got out?
We don't do that nonstop, like, um.
It's really, we don't really spend a lot anyway, but we've been trying to get a lot of stuff done and with everything slowing down, uh, a lot of stuff hasn't been done. So I guess it's a blessing in disguise really, but, uh, the, the real thing is, is that most of what we spend money on are real necessities anyway.
Our POs are large, usually the, the building we built in, down on the park, that, that.
Unless something breaks, it's.
Uh, but we're not wasting money, I don't think.
Now, is there a, are there projected short files or some kind of paperwork you can apply for to get some help? Assistance or is that something that they're just gonna give no matter what or?
Well, I mean, what they do federally is, uh, is, is a whole nother, another, another thing. I live doing, uh, stimulus packages for, for people, even talking about them for, you know, small businesses and, uh, Mayor and I have been on conference calls where we, we've, we've talked with some pretty high people. We've recommended, uh, for cities as well because, you know, what happens to us as well. Um, I'm not sure if it's in the fourth stimulus package, but I had read something that they were considering states as part of that as well. But it's tricky because states like, like New York, for example, they're, uh, they're, they're, they were already in debt and they already were having problems and this made it worse. So I, I don't know what's gonna happen with, with the, the federal government.
We don't have anything to say right now.
But they have been talking about it and, uh, I mean.
We were just gonna be.
That's Joe.
It's my understanding that the House and Senate in Washington may take up a relief package that directed to state and local governments, but nothing has yet been passed. So, uh, and I'm not aware of any benefits that, for which the town could apply short term for payroll or other types of, uh, uh, relief other than a hundred and five thousand dollars that is in the form of a grant that's coming from the state and that money, you know, state surplus, rainy day fund. And that money is available, generally speaking, for capital improvements only. It cannot be used for ongoing daily, weekly, monthly type of expenses that the municipality would incur, like payroll or payments, uh, supplies, et cetera. Uh, I have been reading numerous publications and papers and whatnot since the pandemic shutdown occurred. And I've yet to see any type of reliable prediction, there could be some out there, but I haven't seen it, as to how much the cities and the counties and the state might lose. From memory, and I may have supplied copies to you, uh, the general symbol mid-July first in Nashville to finish its yearly, uh, legislative package, it'd probably be a short one. And the governor wanted, the, the CDC people recommend that it be limited to necessities like the budget. It seems to me like they were going to cut something like four hundred million out of this year's fiscal budget ending, uh, June thirtieth and take six hundred million out of next year's based on sales tax revenues falling off drastically, probably in April, May and June. Uh, and I've wrestled personally with how that went back to city. And if pressed, I would suggest that we may end up being fifty thousand dollars short on this year's budget and revenue by June thirtieth. And maybe fifty to a hundred thousand dollars short, uh, the first quarter of the next fiscal year. Provided when the property tax revenues start coming in in October, we're probably in pretty good shape. But then next year in the spring, we may end up being short. So it's hard to predict if and when this revenue shortage would hit. But, uh, if it does hit, then we will have to borrow some revenue anticipation notes from local lenders. And I think the comptroller's office, the governor's office has said that, uh, in view of this pandemic, that the red tape for the cities and counties to borrow money will not be strong. Now, the mayor and the city manager have been in daily, or every other day meetings, helping with these little people in other cities and counties. So they may have more current information or better information, more accurate information than what I have just presented. And what I've just said is my best guess in my recollection, don't know me to it. But if you're asking for some feel as to where we may be, I think that's my best guess.
Senator Yeager says they're gonna go after some more, but, uh, you know, I mean, he deals with all the surrounding states of their, their legislation body and.
Now, Robert, when it comes to this right here, uh, in front of you, on the debit, the very first one, the government charges, this was extra money that came in to the police chief's budget. And then if you go to the credit side, then you can see that it goes into his payroll. And then on the other one below it, the bank loan, that's the money that we got in and we borrowed for the, uh, uh, long arm. And you look at the credit side, it then represents it goes into that number as, as a, as a, as a, as a credit. And if you go to the nation street pay of seven thousand, that's the money that came in, you look, they made another line item for it to be, uh, on the credit side. But what this really does is this is makes the budget represent what is actually going on, it just gets it in line.
So what?
It's not a, these aren't extra monies that's coming or going, this is what's already happening.
What about the thirty-five thousand for the park capital outlet?
Yep.
That's where their over budget is down there at Arrowhead Park.
That's, yeah, that's the over budget.
On the concession stand.
But they've got a, but that money's already spent, so that one goes with money in and then money out.
But everybody knew that that was over budget, they knew that months ago.
Oh, yeah.
They knew that, somebody had to know that when we had to give the sixty thousand dollars to build that thing.
Yeah, sixty thousand.
From a drawing that we had. Uh, okay, so back to what Joe was talking about, if the state is as fortunate as our three counties are, I think on sales tax, they're not gonna be near as bad as we thought for statewide, but they might not be as fortunate. There's some counties poorer than ours, our three, not many, but few. And, uh, and the other thing on, uh. There's not a lot up there and we got this fight going on between two parties. And this is taking forever to get it settled, who's, who's gonna get what and what they could put in this money. Uh, how many, uh, museums we're gonna try to help or how many presidential libraries we're gonna try to help or whatever. If all that comes into the people that needs it, we might get some of that, but we don't know. But I don't think we'd be quite as bad off than statewide as states predict it so far, if they're as fortunate as we are in the area of the sales tax.
I know, uh, Mary, that, uh, it's not been brought up yet, but I got a reappraisal for my taxes in Roan County and they've socked it to me.
But you gotta, you gotta go to a meeting.
Nothing that you're even counting on getting that you say we're gonna have a shortfall, well, I'm gonna have a shortfall.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be the people having the shortfall.
You know, and then, uh, Oliver Springs is gonna go back and reevaluate their taxes.
Well, you're gonna have to.
Taxes, it's all gonna go up.
You're gonna have to go down in McTeague, well, is that some board?
I've been down there.
I have you?
And if, they give me what they say they, they're gonna give me.
I thought there was a Jew, go down at Jew.
I called them on the phone and, and they said if you wanna set up a meeting to go down to, uh, discuss it and then you're subject to them not approving it. But the bottom line was is that you can't, you can't hardly beat them because the, the, raise your property va, that's the value of houses in your area.
Yeah.
And whether you've done anything to your house or anything, you know, uh, uh, in improvements, that's, that's beside the point. But if you hadn't, it still went up thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, might would have, might would have a little more than that.
But, you know, I'm just seeing that, 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 that's, that right there is, you know, along with the, the tax rate is gonna change come August, October. And that's the revenue we weren't even counting on getting.
Unless we lower the tax rate.
Well, by straight law.
You have to.
For, for the rate, the taxes cannot go up without, I think, some kind of permission from the comptroller's office in the year of the appraisal. There's some, there's some rule regulations, so if you have a hundred thousand dollar valuation for last tax year, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this tax year. Then the tax rate actually has to be lowered by the government in order the tax revenue to be the same for the hundred thousand dollar valuation as to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar valuation.
They suggest you lower the tax rate to keep you from having a windfall.
Yeah, the windfall, yeah.
You saying they're gonna lower our tax rate?
No, no, we have done that in the past and it's been, the state will be lowering too.
They're gonna keep the same rate and they're gonna up property rate.
Yeah.
And Amfitecans coming in next.
Yeah.
Well, I've got mine already.
Well, I got mine, I got mine Friday.
Did he?
Did it go up?
Oh, yeah.
I anticipate going up, but I don't anticipate.
You've got ten minutes left on there.
It's gonna go up.
Usually rates that lower, it's when they get you three years.
You got ten minutes left on TV, I'm cutting it.
I think Terry's right.
I guess I apologize, I got this started, but when I was asking Thomas was, I guess all I'm looking for is one of the camps was just, if you can stay on top of imply what we do, what they give us is not in your control. I just stayed here at the end and we forgot to file something that we did.
It will.
Kind of what I was.
We'll do our best.
Floor.
I made the motion to accept it.
Yeah.
The motion, remember you made the motion.
I saw it.
Any more discussion? Call roll please, Joe.
Martin Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Billy Brown.
Yes.
Terry Hall.
Yes.
Don Schiller.
Yes.
Okay, number eight is discuss a possibly approved purchase of payment road for the street department not to exceed five thousand dollars from Clinton utility board. That's not Clinton, West Coville utility.
Yeah, yeah.
Same, same one, same one as the other.
We don't have enough people operated paid this way.
Yeah, on, on that one, let's wait.
Yeah.
Let's wait then, right, wait for number eight.
Already gave up thirty-five.
I thought that was gonna be included on that one.
It probably could be if the distribution crew was.
Uh, well, it's, we're gonna start fixing our bottles on our own, so our role is not very good.
We don't have to save money.
Uh, but anyway.
You gotta have bodies.
Anyway, we can, we can wait on that. If I could prove that, surely we can buy that less than two thousand.
That backhoe, you run it back and forth, they run over it, it's fine over there.
Number nine, discuss Lloyd Jones inmate work for supervisor's contract due to COVID-nineteen.
In your packet, you'll see Buster Jones' contract. And he's here tonight as well in the back.
Hold you in it, Buster, where everybody can see.
So I know that it was discussed a while back about Buster Jones' contract and how it's set up. And we got with the city attorney to, to see if we were to pay him or if we were not to pay him. And the city attorney has said that on the very bottom line there, where it says termination, that, that it's no way, if it's abolished, where's that word at? That he only doesn't get paid if the program is abolished. So during the COVID-nineteen outbreak, all prisons and all their work crews have stopped going out. So the question was, do we continue to pay him during that time? It wasn't his fault, you know, for T A D U the virus and everybody's been suffering a little bit with what's been going on in the world in some way. So the question then got to the attorney, do we still pay him? Because we just didn't know. And so we asked for a legal opinion and the answer was yes, because the program has been suspended, not abolished. The program is a workable program and we do need it. But the attorney also said that the contract isn't favorable to the city. It doesn't do certain things, it doesn't indemnify us from different liabilities. And that he recommended that we rewrite it. So that's the discussion today. Not if we're gonna keep paying Buster because this contract we do unless you guys vote to cancel it or something. But with this contract, we do continue to pay him. But the question really is about rewriting the contract and then have it be a contract that either Buster would sign or put it out, bid out and have someone else come in and sign it, which, you know, Buster does a good job. And I've enjoyed working with Buster, I don't want nothing bad to happen to him, but this is an issue that you have to address.
I think the motion that we get the, the large drop, the new contract, it includes the Mr. Jones and the contract negotiators. That's what, what's the new contract, what are, what are we saying now? What are, what's going into the new contract?
Well, that, we won't know until he brings the new contract to us.
You'll have to pass that new contract, so.
Who's bringing it to us?
I'll, I'll help, I'll, I'll get with the city attorney and we'll write one, we'll get with Buster and then we'll bring the one in front of you guys for a final approval.
Yeah, but you don't write the contract, cater to him.
No, it won't.
There you go.
It'll be a, a contract.
It'll be a contract.
It'll be figured up everywhere.
Right, to everybody.
As a point of proceeding, you probably don't need a motion or second because the mayor could instruct the city manager to get the city attorney to work out this contract, come back to counsel. There's nothing wrong with the motion to second in passing it though, but because you're not voting on the contract.
No, we're just voting that, I think it's more of an information thing right now.
We have another one drawn up.
Go ahead.
Before we go too far, and, and Joe was right about that. Buster, are you okay with us rewriting the contract that you're currently under? Because there's, it goes two, two directions. One, if you're okay with us rewriting it and then us discussing and bringing one back. Or the other option is, is they have to cancel the current contract, pay you for thirty days because it has that, and then we rewrite the contract in that time and then it, you know, is a new contract. So are, which, are you okay with that? I mean, I don't wanna like force, there's two options.
Sure, I, I.
And they're both bad options, I'm afraid, but.
Well, I mean, as our president said, we're, we're dealing with something we've never done within our lifetimes anyways. Things have changed a lot and I understand that.
You will be, you will be able to, to go over the contract with you, with the lawyer and the city manager myself.
The first thing will be that we'll write the contract and then we'll, we'll show it to Buster and then we'll continue to talk about it.
But, you know, I don't, I don't know what this lawyer does, you know, and stuff and all this, this, this attorney stuff. But you gotta remember now, we're dealing with inmates. And there's certain things inmates have to do, there's certain things inmates are held in for, you know, that's beyond our control.
Well, here's, here's the big thing though. The governor has stated until further notice, no prisoners will be allowed.
Well, I understand that, I'm talking about what he did in his contract.
So it could be one year, two years, three years, four years. So it's just, they're just one of the papers. It's better for us and better for them.
I, I understand that too, but you still got, you still got some technicalities in there.
And that's the, that's the real thing, what if it is a year?
I, I think one thing that, that maybe Don is, is hitting at is this was put in there to protect me because it, it's just this simple when you're dealing with inmates. If, if I make one of them mad, if I fire one and he gets mad, then he can set my crew up and have my crew locked up. And if that protection is not in there, then I don't get paid. That's right, there's a lot of banks too. And that's not anything, you know, just by me doing my job, you know, an inmate can put me in that position and that.
They will lock.
And that's the reason that it was in there. So, you know, I understand and, and as long as we're all together on this and. I can.
Yes, sir.
This is all, Buster's done a good job and I'm not, anything to him, but I'm taking the time to see what all the way back after the prior, your prior guy. Be it his contract.
I didn't do that.
I know I asked fifteen times, is this a better contract? And we're not gonna fall into the hands of no inmates, no pay. Oh, yeah, it's gonna, already we've got no inmates.
But then I got a tax.
You know, it's not. I agree, but now there's sometimes not his fault in me. I mean, I, I could understand if he, if he has got a, needs a sick day or he's got a doctor's appointment or. Have a. That could be on down the road, but right now what we got standing in front of, the bottom line is we're, we're paying a guy to stay at home for something out of our control, plus his, but we gotta do something about it. We have no money for that, so I mean. I understand. This, I don't really know the history, I mean, we'd be kind of in the dark of the history of, I can't even tell you when we had the last inmates last. Well, I certainly hope we get, they let him back out again, but he don't, we're gonna have to come up with something to hire some people. We're gonna continue services. I, I can tell you that, that the inmates weren't working after all the other employees were at home on call bases. We were still working. Actually, I got the call on March twenty-sixth that has a March twenty-seven inmates. March twenty-seven. Cause I know I heard of something about a phone or something. How much time do we lose on that? Didn't you ever, one of them had a phone?
That was on a cell phone since.
Well, that's, that's.
Quill phone.
That's what I heard, something like that, you know, is something that I can't control. They can use that to actually try to hurt me, you know, I mean. But yes, that, that did happen earlier, but yeah, it went back to work, we got to relax. I understand your, you know.
No, you're off two then.
The other way too.
One off late thirty.
When can this contract be written up?
I'll start, I'll start with the attorney tomorrow.
Okay. So. Know something before his next one check?
Um.
Here's a week's check. Well, a week's check, whatever. Well, we should know something about the next council meeting.
Our next meeting is?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
That's two weeks. First day is, we've got a bad. You look about all last night.
Sure.
Twenty-first.
We're gonna need.
According to the calendar, this is seven, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you good yet?
Seven, eleven. We got three weeks.
I still got March at you, honey, just clearing this mess up.
So, so to remind everybody, you know, he's got paid through April, we're mid, midday. So we're first week of May, you know. So what we do in the next meeting, we're gonna.
I'll try to have the contract put together.
He's paid through the last, come on the thirty, he's paid through the rest of my pay.
It's, if we, well, yes, if y'all were to cancel the contract like today, you were saying, let's cancel the contract today. He has a thirty day.
Right.
He would be paid with this, he would be paid for seven to you.
Wait thirty days and then thirty days.
Sixty days.
Why not? Why don't cancel it?
I'm not saying cancel it, I'm saying he's asked about.
If you renegotiate the contract, part of the renegotiation process is the bridge, if this contract we're under would be done away with by agreement, there'd be a new contract implemented. So, but you're right, if you don't get a new contract implemented and you don't want to continue to pay this gentleman, then you give him thirty days notice, but you gotta pay him thirty, thirty, thirty days.
Is this contract still staying?
I have a question, when does this contract expire?
That's been the real debate, we were trying to figure that out.
Cause there's no date, there's no date on this.
It expires thirty days after one side of the other gives the other side notice.
Cause there's no date on this contract, there's no date when it was, when it was written.
You'd have to go back and look in the checkbook. The contract has a date based on course of dealing, it's a party, slip back the minutes when it was passed.
Yeah, but there should be a date on this contract.
I would agree, and if there's not a date on the contract, you gotta go look back to when you passed the town council.
The way this has been going.
I signed the same contract that was in effect when y'all, we switched over here.
Yeah, we changed, we changed the name.
Yeah, we used to.
But keep in mind, you're paying him for his expertise, even though he can't deliver the inmates because of governor's orders, who's somebody's orders, you're still paying him for his expertise, you're keeping him on, I'll stay on the container. And some may like that and some may not like that, I can understand both sides.
I mean.
You don't have an attorney on the container.
Yeah.
I mean, Buster's expertise is really good, he's good with the inmates, he, he works well with them, they listen to him. He has their respect to the point to where they don't do things that would tie up somebody else. Like if, if any of us here had the inmates that, they, Buster knows the tricks that they play. And without ever working in the criminal facilities, I, I don't. And he really does good with them.
He's also gonna manage with the, with bosses that he's got.
He also has a lot of connections to prison as well, so when the inmates do start to get released, I'm sure that that'll help as well.
Do we have any timeline with Mr. Bass in two years or what's your? I mean, if you're, we're gonna talk two years, I don't see a winning end for either one of us.
I don't think anybody here can say when this is gonna be lifted.
But we're gonna pay him till we find out.
No, I'm not saying that, it's, that's why we're having this meeting, that's why this was on the agenda to find.
It's a calculated risk, we don't know when, when we back it full speed and so on like that. The state governor releases him, September first, and we've been paying him all this time. Guess what, he's ready to go to work, probably chomping at the bits. Uh, but if we don't have a contract in place, then how much do we lose? And of course, if it goes a year, then obviously we're paying for a year and we've lost money, so to speak. It's, it's just, no one can know the future.
Like Robert said, forty thousand dollars waiting for you.
That's what y'all get paid big bucks to decide.
Well, I had to get out of Calperr and go right at you, but. So Mr. Bass, did you have a motion on the floor or a motion on the floor that we, we need to discuss yet?
We got a motion ahead of second, I believe.
Who's second?
Did you second it?
I seconded it, no.
No, I didn't second it.
Nobody, no, we started discussing, I guess, let's see.
I can read jokes, I can read, take away my.
You withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion and they can do this.
Then the mayor can make it.
Yeah.
Mayor.
You can, you can order the manager to do the contract.
Yeah, I ordered you to do the contract.
Yes, sir.
I'll help if you need it, I'll remove my motion.
But no offense to Mr. Van Hook, but I've never seen a lawyer give us something in two weeks, so. So.
You sure there wasn't no offense to that?
So, Mr. Bass, Mr. Bass, I'll second your motion the next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn, yes, sir.
I don't do too well speaking in, in this environment, I, I'm not faired real well with it. But they are doing, they're testing all inmates and employees right now. And they say that by next week, they will all statewide be tested. And I suspect that once that's done, that that'll open things up. They found a lot of cases that led to, okay, it's loaded with.
With a trap, with a trap, you know.
Wasn't ninety-five.
Yeah. If your case, uh, did we, yes, he had some more concern, I mean, settled down horrors.
So no one really anticipated the pandemic ever, I don't, I don't think that it was ever on anybody's mind. It's really slung in the face of how we've all been trained in the world of work and what to do. Uh, to go home and hide isn't how we've ever been taught and.
I'm gonna get in trouble by asking a question, I'm sorry. Uh, would, would you be willing to come out daily and do, do a task if we had something you could do maybe?
Sure. I mean, I, I would love to go pick inmates in the morning and be here, you know.
How about yourself though, like if you come in, like, you know, if you come in and spend some time at the garage or whatever. Would you fit, would be, would you be willing to do that?
I mean, I like to say this, this is something that none of us have ever dealt with, so, you know, it's strange circumstances and I'm hoping to discussion about anything here, you know. I mean, throwing out there, Mr. Bass, he's got some curbs to play.
Yeah, Bass got some curbs to play. Oh, he's not above playing curbs, I'm sure, his back's.
Only he brought it up earlier that you do something.
Well, out on the foreline, I mean, that's, that's the final stage we made.
Well, you and I'll talk about that, is that right? Or you, you and him talk about it? Cause there's, you know, there's probably some things around that you could do and, and that some of us may feel better, you know, if you're out here digging ditches or something, I don't know.
Cause something about getting paid and the guys at the house is going to tell you. So, Terry. All, all the mowers we got, the.
Would that?
Zebra care.
No, we got, I think we got, do we have any push mowers, Buster?
I ain't have much.
Underwork.
Oh, you're talking about tractor truck.
Yeah, I'm talking about riding mowers.
Is something you can ride?
Yeah.
I can drive, don't miss a real turn, I can run a hand. Of course, we need to order some more tombstones.
So, you know, that, that may be something that, that was brought up from the mayor that's actually a really good idea. I, I don't mean to, to, to push this onto Buster or anything, but to, to go further with it. Um, if we were to have Buster to come in and help us with other tasks, not strict labor tasks. Um, if we were to have Buster to come in and help us with other tasks, not strict labor tasks or things that'll run him off, but you know, things that we all do on a daily basis, the other crews do. Would that set better with everybody? Cause.
Well, I mean, I kind of look at it personally that the money he's getting paid would be money going towards a worker that works. So if you kind of feel that bill and you're kind of meeting in the middle. But remember the bargain you get when I do bring inmates, you're paying me less than anybody here. And you're getting four to six workers for that.
Which will help on your answer when it comes back.
Okay, are we finished discussing that? Discussing that? Is there anything else to be brought before the council?
I've got one thing.
Yes, sir.
For the camera and the public, uh, our next meeting is, is doing be closed in this way?
I don't know.
We won't know until they tell us different.
They keep coming out with new executive orders.
So are we working off of something to stay?
As, as of right now, we.
Today, we got to thirty, number thirty-four. It, we're kind of under this of last day of June.
We gotta do social distancing. That's what we're doing with the six feet.
So it's probably last day of June.
Last day of June, it, he's. Just want to make it earlier and puts it to the last day of June.
Cause what we're doing now is just saying.
So that gives us some, this month and next month.
So we're back to.
He couldn't change it. You know that. I mean, he comes out with these every two or three days, seems like.
But we're back to a citizen has a problem to call or email. I mean.
Yeah. We were going to open city hall that Monday, but.
The yard will open it up.
We're running, but I'm not sure we still.
I might know because the numbers have been going up in Tennessee because everybody's been out. Everybody was locked in and not really leaving and now everybody's out and doing everything that, that they want to do and the numbers are starting to climb again.
But in New York City, sixty percent of people's got it was enclosed. So.
I heard it travels to the vent.
What are you going to do?
The vent system.
Yeah, we went from seven thousand seventy, two weeks ago this past Monday, to fourteen thousand something today.
Yeah.
Roll county, county, so they changed already that.
That's probably more tasty.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Most adjourned.
Anything else? Most adjourned, second. Everybody standing that's in favor. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, chief. Hey, did, did you have something?
No, I'm just a phone walk there.